Okay, good evening. I'd like to convene this public hearing of the Klarven Township Zoning Hearing Board. At this time, I would last ask the members of the zoning hearing board to introduce themselves.
Jessica Ziegler-Stielar.
Kimberly Long.
Amy Potts.
Tim Dutton.
David Otschop.
John Wong.
Taylor Gobert.
And I'm Mike Gunbar, I'm the solicitor. And I would note for the record that Kim and Jessica are both sitting tonight as alternate members, so they can participate in the hearing itself, but they do not have the ability to engage in deliberations or the decision-making process.
The only matter on tonight's agenda is the hearing for the application of Yellow Cab Holdings Pennsylvania LLC requesting a variance to locate an additional freestanding monument sign at the proposed Wendy's restaurant outparcelled at Morgantown Crossing Shopping Center. At this time, I would like to turn the hearing over to the solicitor to explain the procedure for tonight's hearing and to enter certain items into the record for tonight's hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Before we get started, I do see that there are some members of the public in attendance for tonight's meeting, so if you are here tonight and you want to participate in the hearing, meaning you would like the ability to ask questions of the witnesses or make any statements to the zoning hearing board either in favor of or opposition to the proposed application, you do need to make yourself a party to the record for the hearing. So if you do want to so participate, I'd ask you to raise your hand so we can get your name and address for the record. That's it?
Lynn Burkholder. A. Morgan Circle, Morgantown.
And that's it? Okay, so let the record apply that no one else in attendance for tonight's hearing would like to participate as a party of interest. At this time, I will give a brief explanation of the procedure that we will use for tonight's hearing. Initially, the applicant will make its presentation to the zoning hearing board. As part of that, the applicant and its witnesses will have to be placed under oath by the sonographer prior to presenting any testimony. After they have presented any evidence and testimony, they will be subject to questioning by the zoning hearing board members as well as Mr. Burkholder. Once the applicant finishes its presentation, then Mr. Burkholder will have the opportunity to make any statements to the zoning hearing board regarding the requested relief. As part of that, Mr. Burkholder will be subject to questioning by the zoning hearing board as well as the attorney for the applicant. After all evidence and testimony has been presented, then the zoning hearing board can recess into executive session, which means they can go back into private meeting behind us and deliberate on the matter at that time. Once deliberations are complete, the zoning hearing board can either announce its decision tonight, or they can announce a future date in time when the decision will be publicly rendered. So with that, I will introduce certain exhibits, excuse me, certain documents as exhibits into the record for tonight's hearing, which have been premarked as follows. Exhibit zoning hearing board number one is the application submitted by the applicant on October 13th, 2022. Exhibit zoning hearing board number two is the proof of publication from the Red Eagle evidencing that notice of this hearing was advertised on October 27th and November 3rd, 2022. Exhibit zoning hearing board number three is a letter signed by the attached zoning officer evidencing that he caused notice of this hearing to be posted at the subject property on October 28th, 2022. And exhibit zoning hearing board number four is a proof of mailing signed by myself in my capacity as the board solicitor evidencing that I caused notice of this hearing to be mailed on October 19th, 2022 to the applicant, the township board of supervisors, the Burks County Planning Commission, and all neighboring property owners. Lastly, to the extent necessary, the Klarven Township zoning ordinance, although that marked as an exhibit, will be a part of the record for tonight's hearing. At this time, I would ask the attorney for the applicant to enter his appearance on the record.
This is Robert Tucker.
Mr. Tucker, do you have any objection to those exhibits being a part of the record for tonight's hearing?
No objection.
Okay. Do you have any questions about the process that we're going to use for tonight?
I do not.
Okay, then I will turn the floor over to you to provide a brief explanation to the board and start with your first witness.
Sure thing. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to hand out our premarked exhibit packet. Can you just take one and pass it around? Should be enough. Again, my name is Bob Tucker with Catherine Stewart, and I am the attorney for the applicant, Yellow Cab Holdings PA LLC. The applicant is a tenant of the property, a notice Morgantown Crossings Shopping Center. The lease agreement, the applicant owner into the property owner authorizes applicant to proceed with this appeal. The shopping center is 65 acre parcel, and is improved with the Lowe's, Walmart, and various other businesses. Recently, land development plans were approved and recorded in which Wendy's is going to be put in at the corner of the shopping center, and that's why we're here this evening. There's a section of your zoning ordinance, 611.5B, which provides that no more than two freestanding signs shall be erected on one lot. Now, this lot is 65 acres and has multiple businesses, and in fact, it already has four freestanding signs, so we're here seeking a variance in that section of the ordinance to permit the Wendy's proposed freestanding monument sign. The sign permit application was submitted by the applicant following approval of the land development plans, at which point your zoning officer determined that the signs were all complying with the exception of this freestanding sign, and that a variance was required. That lost the application, which is the subject of tonight's hearing. With me this evening, I have Kevin Fruck, engineer, who's going to testify shortly. Before I get to him, I just have to identify the exhibit site. I have Mark Harnar exhibit packet. A1 is the application. A2 is a resume from Mr. Fruck. A3 is aerial photo of the property. A4 is the overall site plan, which is recently recorded and been approved by the township. A5 is the prototype plans for the Wendy's. A6 is the signage plans. And A7 is the letter from the zoning officer determining that a variance is required to permit the Wendy's freestanding sign. Unless there's any questions for me, I'd like to call Mr. Fruck to test my first witness.
Just for the testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be back.
I do.
Thank you.
Can you please state your name?
Kevin Fruck.
Describe your educational backgrounds.
Certainly. I have a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Engineering from Brooks University, 1995.
You have an exhibit packet in front of you. Can you turn to A2?
Yes.
Is that a true and accurate copy of your resume?
It is.
I'd like to move to admit Mr. Fruck as an expert in civil engineering. Board have any questions for Mr. Fruck about his education or experience as a civil engineer? Are there objections to allowing him to testify as an expert witness in that appeal? Mr. Burkholder, do you have any questions about that? Do you have any objections to him being an expert witness tonight? So the board will accept him as an expert witness in civil engineering.
Okay, thank you very much. Kevin, have you been involved with the proposed Wendy's at the Morgantown Shopping Center?
I have, yes.
Turning to exhibit A3, which is an aerial photograph of the property, can you just describe where the property is located and discuss the size of it?
Certainly. The roads on this aerial are not marked, but I think we're all familiar with the site. The main road to the top is Main Speeder 23. On the far right side, you have the traffic signal, and you'll see the pad on that far right side that is undeveloped. It's just pavement right now. So that is the area that was just recently approved for two pad sites, a Wendy's and another fast food pad site. So we are the one that will be closest to the intersection.
And can you just identify the two buildings in the aerial to the left? That is the Lowe's, correct?
Yes, so the two larger buildings on that aerial are, on the left-hand side is the Lowe's, and to the back is the Walmart. And then you have some other pad sites, AutoZone, Dunkin' Donuts, Sonic, different paddocks that are already just on the site.
Are you familiar with the zoning ordinance of this township?
I am, yes.
Is the property located in the industrial office park district?
It is.
Now, turning to the site plan, we have it as A4.
Yeah, I think A4 is it.
Like, you did describe the location, but can you just using this point to where Wendy's is going to be located?
Certainly, as you can see, so this is a plan prepared for Klarven Hearing, they didn't land development plans for the update, they did the plans 18 some years ago. And what the plan shows is at the corner of Heritage Drive and 23 are the two pad sites. So the pad site to the right, inside that box circle is where the Wendy's will be.
Now, turning to A6, which we have marked as the signage plans. Is it your understanding that this is Wendy's proposed signage at the location?
Yes, it is.
Still on this first page, can you just point to where the sign of issue, the number and the location?
Certainly, so the sign of issue is number one on that, and this is pad six, so it's the signage plan. So number one, it's a monument sign, it's located up at the corner. It's to be behind the setback line, so it exceeds the 10 feet that are required, and it's going to be, the setbacks are like 20 feet, so the monument sign is located right there at the intersection.
Now, had this Wendy's been located on its own standalone lot, would a variance be required for this freestanding sign?
No, it would not. In fact, I believe the development across Horizon Drive has, really has two uses, and each of them has their own monument sign.
And using the second page of the signage plans, can you just help avoid the size of the monument sign?
Certainly. So this is a typical Wendy's monument sign. What they'll do is a stoner concrete base that sits up about 18 inches, and on top of that is about eight and a half foot high sign. Seems like a lot, but really that, the Wendy's part of it takes up about two, two and a half feet of that height, so it's really, Wendy's is a changeable copy, it's about six feet, and then that Wendy's graphic sits up in that semicircle kind of sitting up line. It's about six and a half feet wide, you can see, and it's internally illuminated.
In your opinion, is a sign necessary to identify the restaurant and the entrance?
I think so. I've driven by the site many times. Heading eastbound, it's nice to know, I mean, people familiar with the lot, obviously know where to turn, but if you're heading the other direction, coming west on 23, you're, with redevelopment now, especially with the signs that you have there, this building sits back about 150 feet from the road. So having a sign there, I think, really helps you because with a lot of fast food places, once you're past the pad, you don't really want to go there. So if you miss the Horizon Drive, you're most likely not going to go there. That's the worry. So the idea is if you have a monument sign, it's going to sit up much further, you'll be able to identify where that is, safely make that movement into the left turn lane, and then into the shopping center.
And just so the board is aware, we also have Ken Fried, who's the VP of Construction for Yellow Cab Holdings, sitting behind me. He's available if you have any further questions, if there's any need for such a sign for this business. I don't intend to call him unless the board has any further questions. Back to you, Kevin. In your opinion, would the grants of this variance be detrimental to the public welfare?
I don't think so.
Would the grants of the variance alter the character of the neighborhood?
No.
Is this the minimum variance necessary to afford reasonable use for this property?
I believe so, yes.
Those are all the questions I have for Mr. Fruck.
Do you remember if there's any questions?
My first question is going to relate to the stop bar at the adjacent traffic light and the line of sight looking in either direction, particularly in the direction of the sign. Do you have any thought processes about the width and height of that obstruction, even though it is at a traffic light, not being able to see oncoming traffic?
I don't believe it will. There's plenty of room to install that sign and push that further back than needed to be. The stop bar does sit quite a ways forward, so there's a right turn lane if you're heading eastbound. So that, you know, that's 15 feet further forward that a car is sitting. So if you count that 15 feet, another, I think it's another 10 or so feet, it's not really on the plan at this scale, but say another 10 or so feet to the right-of-way line, and another 20 feet, the sign's still going to be sitting back 35, 40 feet from the street proper.
So as it's not clearly called out at the precise location now, you'd be amenable to placing that in a location that is not in obstruction?
I think that's the one thing that I questioned was, the location of number one appears that it's very far out on the corner. So is that not, in theory, the location of the sign?
It sits out.
If you're saying 35 feet off of the roadway?
Well, it'd be about 35 feet off of the line of sight. So right now, if you count the right turn lane, they're usually 15 feet wide. So the traveling public, they would need that line of sight to make the left-hand turn at the traffic signal. Imagine you're sitting at that traffic signal, then you have behind you to your left, 15 feet back.
A traffic signal to turn on the main street?
To turn on the main street, sorry. To your left, you would have that right turn lane, 15 feet, cars coming toward you, and then you'd still have distance to the right-of-way, and then the setback distance beyond that. But yes, I mean, we'll take a look at that and make sure, we look at the site distance, and I think we have land development plans that we can verify what the site lines are. Can we provide that with the sign permit, though?
Any other questions for any board members?
Is it not possible for the Wendy's to utilize the existing Morgantown Crossing signs that state the Subway, the Dunkin' Donuts, the Arby's, the Going Postal, and all the other businesses? Can they not utilize those to put their name on there?
They're much further to the west. And I guess the concern with that is you can't turn into the first entrance, it's a right-in, right-out.
But there is another entrance beyond that.
There is, yeah, there's a signalized one beyond to the Lowe's, but then you're coming all the way back.
And the size of the sign is the typical size that you have at all of your other restaurants?
Or? It is a typical sign. They would prefer to have a pylon sign, but they will do monument signs. Usually, a pylon sign is similar in size, but it sits up 25 feet.
Any other questions for board members? I do have one question. Do you know where the closest existing monument sign is on the property? Or how far away is this proposed to be from that?
I don't have an exact mention. It is sitting in front of the Sonic, actually between Sonic, so there's three pads there. There's Sonic, and then a driveway, and then there's three other pads, so it sits in front of those three pads, based on the record plan.
Sir, can you answer that?
Yes.
All right. Could you say your name for the record?
Yeah. I am Ken Fried, I'm Vice President of Construction for Yellow Cab Holdings.
Mr. Frey, just for the testimony, I'm about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be back.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I scaled that plan yesterday, and that sign, that the existing monument sign, is roughly 600 feet away from where our site is.
So on the, on the plan we're looking at here, it's got that dotted line. The dotted line is the setback?
There is a, yes, there's two setback lines, one is a building setback, and there's a, it looks like a parking setback along the front, so that would be the parking setback.
So, and I understand 15 feet for the right turn, and then that puts it 20 feet off of the curb, or assuming there's a curb there?
Right, so there's curb and sidewalk, and then there's a right-of-way line, and then there's a setback beyond that. So you have, and I don't have the exact dimensions, but let's say the setback is 10 feet, and you have another 10 feet from the curb to the right-of-way, that's 20 feet. And then if you want to count the, that right turn lane, that's 15 feet.
Okay, so it's 20 feet off of the?
And if this is, this is everyone's concern, we'll stipulate that, we'll stay outside of the site triangle and coordinate that with your zoning officer, with the sign permit.
Will any part of the sign be electronic or digital?
It appears what is being proposed here is the changeable copy, not the digital. It is internally eliminated, but it's not, it's like we're going, that's something that you would worry about from that perspective. Is that what you're?
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going, so where it says three lines of changeable copy, that's not a digital board.
It is not a digital board, it's physically changeable copy.
This question may be a little outside of your scope as far as the Wendy's front end goes, but did you say that the nearest entrance to the east, it was right-in, right-out?
Yes. When I went there, looked like that, yes.
Just like I want to cheat.
I want to yell at people every time I have.
Any other questions for Mr. Fruck? Mr. Burkholder, do you have any questions for Mr. Fruck?
Comment slash question? You mentioned that the sign would facilitate drivers heading eastbound on 23, being made aware of the Wendy's, and they could turn into Heritage Drive and be served. I'm curious about the westbound traffic, because at that point, when they're alerted there, is this not going to create a, or compound the possible dangerous situation in that right-in, right-out? Because there really is no entrance for them there, so they're going to try to go in there, if they're not familiar with the road, and potentially increase the danger factor for traffic there.
Correct, so I was speaking eastbound because that seems to be the majority of traffic flow very often, but there is a lot of traffic heading westbound. So if you're heading westbound, then your intent is to go to Wendy's, you need to know ahead of time, obviously, and you have the light at Horizon Drive, there is a?
Heritage Drive.
Oh, Heritage Drive, I'm sorry. There is that, that left turn lane.
Right.
So it's about 200 probably feet long, which means if it has cars stacked, it's about 100 feet. And then safe stopping, site distance, I think the road's 45 miles an hour, so I'm trying to think of the chart, and it's between another 200 feet that they, that pen dot would look at for you to make that decision making and safely turn into that. So again, I think that's another reason to say that the sign makes sense, because you want to let people know heading westbound as well, that there is a Wendy's there, and again, you don't want people passing that signalized intersection, making that, that turn to that nice pork chop driveway that everyone does when they're not supposed to.
Yeah, I just think that there's, there's already that's happening, obviously, and that the sign there, you know, there could be a lot of people, unless you live in the area, you don't know that you have to turn on Heritage Drive.
Right.
And it's going to, my concern is that it will increase the risk factor of people going in that right-in, right-out.
Do you have any other questions for Mr. Fruck?
No.
Board have any other follow-up questions? Do you have?
Yeah, I have one more follow-up question. So the existing pylon signs on the Morgantown Crossing property, I had counted three that, you know, note Morgantown Crossing, and have the other businesses in the industrial commercial area there on those. Did Morgantown Crossing offer to extend another pylon sign, similar and consistent with its, with its industrial part there to promote the Wendy's?
I don't know.
They did not.
They did not?
They did not.
Is it, so the, the? No, actually, so it sits back beyond the sign line is the, that was all my questions.
Do you have any follow-up?
Yeah, I would just move to admit our exhibit, exhibits that are included in the exhibit packet, A1 through A7, into the record.
Any objections for any board members regarding the exhibits? Mr. Burkholder, do you have any objections to those exhibits? So the board will accept exhibits A1 through A7 into the record.
And then just, just a quick close-in, just want to reiterate, if this was a standalone lot, this Wendy's would be here, and the sign would be permitted, it's just the nature of, of the lot, the shopping center lot, the multiple businesses is the reason we're here this evening, and the sign's important to Wendy's operation, so we request any grant of variance. Thanks, thank you.
Support have any other questions for Mr. Fruck or Mr. Frey?
Just one other question, looking back to section four, so the Wendy's is the building on the right within the dotted lines?
Yes, there's that dotted, with that box, if you will, on the right, yes.
So what's that other building?
I think on the plan it said, yeah, on the record plan it says Popeyes, but we don't know.
Okay, so, but there's another pad there?
Yes.
Will it be built at the same time, or is that just they're prepping another pad?
We don't know.
You don't know if it's weak, that they're going to build.
Hold on, do you want to be this morning?
Sure.
Mr. Frey, the testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be back.
I do.
Say your name and occupation for the record.
Terrence K. Nagle. I'm Vice President of 3000 Consultants and employed by the township as a zoning officer and building code official. Both Popeyes and Wendy's have their building permits. I have no idea when scheduled, but they both have their building permits and are ready, can start at any time.
Terry, in your opinion, would Popeyes would also be looking for a similar variance in this case?
They have not even submitted their signage package yet, so there's no indication at
Terry, when the, when the pad sites were, when we decided, when you were determining the amount of pad sites that were going to be in that, the original signage for the property by the owner of the 65 acres?
The original pad site was actually about a 9,000 square foot retail store, that area where the two restaurants are going in. That was changed, and with this new land development plan, to the two restaurants. So the original land development plan for the shopping center had a 9,000 square foot standalone retail store out there that never got built. So the pad site has been redone to accommodate the two restaurants.
So in essence, a pad site has been added, after an additional pad site has been added to the original plan, and the original signage was, was installed?
Correct.
And the original land development plan would have complied with the ordinance? And the original land development plan would have complied with the ordinance?
No, the original land, the, I shouldn't say that. The original signage got its own variance way back.
Yes, I was here. So was John. We go way back. I was just wondering about, because I knew that it was a big deal when they were asked, you know, when they were determining. Here.
Anything else for the board? Would the board like to recess into executive session to discuss the matter? Oh, I'm sorry, wait, let's get Mr. Burkholder. Mr. Burkholder, do you have a statement you'd like to make to the board?
I just had a similar question, I want Mr. Osbogg to about the, should they be anticipating the same kind of proposal from Popeyes?
Mr. Knall?
We have no clue at this point.
Mr. Burkholder, would you like to make a statement to the board, are you in favor of this or opposed to it? You should be sworn in before you make a statement.
Sure, I'll, I'll.
Just for the testimony, I want to give you the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so I'll be back.
Sorry, go ahead.
As a business owner on a neighboring property, I understand the desire to have that sign. I'm not opposed to it from a concept standpoint, as long as it complies with the concerns that were raised, you know, sight line kinds of things and possible consideration of the fact that if Popeyes wants to do that, then you have two of those things very close to each other. As well as the traffic scenario that I mentioned prior.
Any questions for Mr. Burkholder? Do you have any questions for Mr. Burkholder?
I don't know.
Just one more question for Terry. When Starbucks and Domino's is there now?
Yes.
Right. So, that was one pad site that was thought to be one, one, an individual restaurant and it ended up splitting, correct?
No, it was designed initial, from the very outset as two entities in that pad site. Taco Bell went in first and then the Starbucks and Domino's building was built for two tenant spaces. They were actually, Domino's was part of the original land development plan for that. They just delayed in executing their building permit for two years. I mean, it was quite a while.
So, because they were attached, the sign for them, there's one signage with both on it?
Correct.
So, has there been any thought on the township's, from the township's side? Because now you have those two, okay, they're not attached, but there are two individual pad sites that were not supposed to be one. About, like a double sign like that? I mean, has there been any thoughts from them, concerns that, you know, because each, each one now may want their own big individual sign?
They have not approached the township about that. If they do, they're all.
The township has had no thoughts on that.
No.
What since, they originally had one huge one and now they, the township has divided it, correct? So, they've.
Well, okay, the, the actual developer divided that into the two buildings that are there now. Taco Bell and this.
But they had to come before the, they had to, obviously.
Right.
So, when, at that time when that was done, there was no talking about signage?
No, not that I'm remembering. Now, the Starbucks, Domino's, and Taco Bell, they each have their own freestanding sign and those are the two that are allowed. So, if they want to put another freestanding sign in, they would have to come for a variance.
Yeah, one would just think that you have to kind of get that support, especially when you're doing this. And if you want, you know, businesses to come in, you obviously have to advertise that, I think is real important. You know, advertise your business, right? So, you would have, yeah, okay, I thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments for any board members? Shall we do recess?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, the board will go off the record and recess into a second session to deliberate on the matter.